All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and welcome to the West Milford Township regular meeting agenda and volunteer night, April 19th, 2023. The records reflect that it's 5:30. Pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act NJ SA 10:4-8, adequate advance notice of this regular meeting was advertised in the Herald News and in the record in its issue of January 10th, 2023, March 21st, 2023, and posted continuously on the bulletin board in the main quarter of Town Hall and also on record with the Office of the Township Clerk. Please make note of the emergency exits located to the left, right, and rear of the room, and if you would, please all join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, registered, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Fred is here. He's stuck in the doorway.
Okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilwoman Eric.
Here.
Councilwoman Zucca.
Here.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
She's here.
Councilwoman Gudser.
Yes.
Councilwoman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
Mayor Dale.
Here. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes of the March 15th regular meeting and executive session, a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Eric.
Yes.
Councilwoman Zucca.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gudser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
Mayor, sorry.
I don't vote. Thank you, though. For the public certification, our upcoming meetings are May 3rd, which is a regular meeting, May 17th, which is also a regular meeting, and we also have June 14th, which is a regular meeting. I'm going to do the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month next, and I will read it from up here since it looks quite crowded down there. This is the Township of West Milford, Passaic County, New Jersey, proclamation supporting April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas children are vital future success, prosperity, and quality of life for the Township of West Milford, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. Whereas all members of our community have a role to play in strengthening families to ensure children grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from fear, abuse, and neglect. Whereas all children deserve to have a safe, stable, nurturing, healthy, and happy home and community that fosters their well-being, and whereas almost 300 children in Passaic County who enter the child welfare system due to abuse or neglect each year, and whereas some of those children reside in West Milford. Whereas for the last 15 years, Passaic County CASA for Children has provided court-appointed volunteer advocates for children throughout Passaic County, including in the Township of West Milford, who have been removed from a home due to abuse and/or neglect. Whereas Passaic County CASA for Children requires the generosity of a community volunteers to step up to serve as court-appointed special advocates for each of these children. Now therefore I, be it resolved, Mayor of the Township, Council of West Milford, calls upon residents, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in their efforts to support children who have been abused and/or neglected and placed into foster care. Be it further resolved that I, Michelle Dale, do proclaim April 23rd as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Township of West Milford. Is there anyone here that was going to accept this? Okay, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to double check. All right. Normally, we start the volunteer night at 5:30, but we see one of the volunteers is in here, so instead of making, okay, great.
Is he here now?
Yes, perfect. All right. So we will start with that. It's a very exciting night in West Milford. It's always my honor, as well as the Council's honor and privilege, to host this evening and recognize some really great volunteers. One of the awards is given out by former mayors, and the other one is a selection from the Township Council. So I will start with Mike Joy, and if you could just meet me at the podium. We've got like program in here tonight. All right. It's good, though. It's good. Mike, how are you? Mike's talking to me tonight. Usually, it's a simple hello. How are you? Congratulations, and thank you for being here, and thank you to all of your family and friends and everybody who supports you in the community for being here. I'm going to read a little bit about Mike, and then I'm going to ask him to say just a word or two. Is that going to be? Just two. Okay. We'll keep it to two words. It might be just "thank you," but we'll see if we can get more out of him. All right. 2022 Volunteer of the Year Award, Michael Joy, April 19th, 2023. Michael Joy is a lifetime resident of West Milford, known by many as just Mike, but you will hear from his family, his family call him Michael. As his mother would say, I thought this was funny, if I wanted to call him Mike, I would have named him Mike. He grew up here with his parents Donald and Marion and his six siblings. In 1990, Michael married his loving wife Karen. They raised their children in Michael's childhood home where he still resides. His children Jonathan and Michelle describe him as goofy and full of useless knowledge. That's not nice. If you're ever on a Who Wants to be a Millionaire show, he should be your phone-a-friend. Currently, the biggest joy in his life are his grandchildren, Sophia and Connor. He enjoys being outdoors, playing games, and spending time with his family and his friends. Michael has dedicated his free time to the community and helping those in need. In 2009, he joined the Search and Rescue. Search and Rescue is a volunteer organization whose mission is to assist lost and injured hikers. During Superstorm Sandy, Michael spent multiple nights offering help at OEM, answering the phones, and his days helping on the mission to check on individuals that were not able to leave their home. He has always been a dedicated member of the team looking to help the community that he loves. He has consistently maintained at least a 90% attendance record to all search and rescue-related missions, trainings, and meetings. During his time with Search and Rescue, Michael acquired the necessary training to volunteer to drive for the West Milford First Aid Squad. In 2018, he began taking general calls when volunteers were needed. Even as I write this, I'm assuming this is your daughter or your wife?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, this is pretty funny. Even as I write this, a call came through for a driver, and he was up and had his shoes on before the tones had even finished. In 2020, West Milford established a community emergency response team. Without hesitation, he joined to help West Milford in any capacity that he can. Michael is eager to assist whenever needed. He is always willing to help and ready to help no matter what time of day or how far away, or his search and rescue friends would, as they would say, rain, snow, or 20 below. I remember leaving an event at the high school, finding a car that had a blown tire in Westbrook Schools driveway. Without a second thought, we pulled off to offer help. He's always a phone call away and ready to service community, family, and friends. He is thoughtful and a caring man, and even though he is a man of few words, he is always and has continues to make his family proud and is an amazing role model for his kids and his grandchildren. Congratulations, Michael. And then this is, the plaque is presented to Michael Joy in recognition of your dedicated volunteer service to the people of West Milford on the behalf of the mayor and the Township Council. Thank you for everything you do for our community. Would you like to say a few words? You said two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Family, anybody from his family? Would you like to say anything?
Mike, you're on the wall now here.
Anybody? Anyone from his family? Everybody's good?
Say thank you.
All right. He did say thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Good job, Mike.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the 2022 Mary B. Hasi Lifetime Achievement Award for volunteerism, and James Rogers, if you would please join me at the podium. I gave you the formal, but now I'm going to go a little easier. Okay. All right. Jim Rogers has been a resident of West Milford for 45 years. Jim is a retired superintendent of schools of the Morris County School District. He was the former mayor of the Beautification and, former member of the Beautification and Recycling Committee and the Health Advisory Board. His current trustee of the West Milford Library Board, liaison to the West Milford Lakes Committee, and a member of the West Milford Environmental Commission, and Green Waste Committee, and a member of the Planning Board and the Master Plan Committee. As a volunteer of each respective board and commission and committee, Jim has never hesitated to offer his time and expertise on various matters that require extensive research and active participation in each organization's efforts and projects. From his contributions to the extensive planning details for the new library, physically performing and testing of streams and water bodies to compile water quality data, surveying and assessing tree plantings for major reforestation grant, preparing documents for various environmental and land use-related ordinances, amendments, and studies, and working on the master plan amendments, Jim has spent countless hours, and have, they have resulted in many accomplishments within the township. His volunteer efforts have helped to greatly improve and enhance the community, and the residents will benefit well into the future from the time he has invested into each organization. Jim continues to be commended for his profound dedication in devoting a large portion of his lifetime to actively serving numerous volunteer bodies for local communities as well as the community at large. He is truly deserving of this recognition of the Mary B. Hasi Lifetime Achievement Award for 2022. Congratulations, Jim. I personally have had the opportunity to work with Jim in many different capacities, and these could not be more, these words could not be more true. You really are a professional, and you put your heart and soul into everything you do. And thank you on the behalf of myself and the governing body for being such a great volunteer to our community. You're welcome.
Genuinely appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody? Would you like to say a few words?
And Jim, your name is on that board over there.
As long as my picture isn't in the post office.
That's what Mike said.
First of all, thank you, Mayor. Genuinely appreciate it. It is indeed an esteemed honor. I'd like to thank the council and, of course, the former mayor's selection council for my choice tonight. I'm just overwhelmed by it, to be perfectly frank. You know, over the years, I've had the privilege of working with a number of volunteers in this township, all very, very dedicated, many of whom are equally deservant of this award. But I've had the good fortune to have a friend serve as a mentor for me, Doug I. His name is on that plaque over there, along with several others, Art Cahill, Marilyn Lichtenberg, and Marty Tappin, who is here. Happy birthday, Marty.
Happy birthday.
It's just been extraordinary to work with these people and draw their strengths and all they have to offer. It's just a, I think it makes for a great township. I've been here 45 years, as you mentioned, Mayor, and it's been 45 wonderful years and absolutely beautiful community that we cherish. This environment is absolutely incredible. Thus, my joining the Environmental Commission, and it was Doug who kind of pushed me along those lines, got me on the library board, just served as a unique and wonderful role model, a genuinely wonderful man. In any event, here I am today, and I am just so again overwhelmed by this, and I thank you, Mayor, I thank the selection committee and everyone for all that you've done for this community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We do have a few presentations from other volunteer committees and services. If you need to leave, we'll give you like a minute or two to exit, but we do have other, others on the agenda here. What did I do? I had my sheet. Yes? Yeah. Yeah. I don't know what I did with mine. No, but I had a separate one. All right, I got it. So for anyone who wants to stay, we will be having refreshments. I know that this group, there's something planned, but I don't want to say anything, so you're welcome to stay. Erica had come up to me saying they would need. We'll pull this back together. This evening, we also have a presentation. The first one on the agenda is Sustainable West Milford, DBA, Nature's Connection of West Milford. Oh, hi, Luke. How are you? I'm good, thanks. Good.
We didn't print anything out, although we have a little bit of it printed out, so you guys can see what's going on for us.
Great.
Okay. So my name's Wendy Watson-Hollowell. My husband Dave and I started Sustainable West Milford about 15 years ago, and it's amazing how sustainable our town is now. It's pretty amazing. The things that we are all doing now, and it's just changed so much in the last 15 years. So what we've decided to do is go a little more upstream, really to that root decision that has you decide if you're going to kind of act sustainably or not, and it's that connection we have with nature. So many of us live in this incredible, beautiful place, and yet a lot of us still don't really have a way to connect with nature in a way that feels safe or comfortable or easy, and so we've decided to shift our strategy. We've moved over from being sustainable, really over to connecting with nature, and there's some reasons why that Luke's been educating me about, so I'm going to let him tell you about it.
Yeah, and just to give you a little background, you know, just being able to survive COVID as an organization and, you know, come out of that in survival mode taught us a lot, and we kind of came together at the end of last year thinking about, you know, moving forward and revitalizing and reinvigorating our organization and the larger community. You know, I go back to the example of just so many new people coming into our community, but not always knowing sure, you know, not always knowing where to go and how to explore nature, and sometimes if that first experience is really not fun, they may never venture out there again. I'm at Ringwood State Park on the weekends, and I can tell you, you know, plenty of people who want to try and get out there and explore, but sometimes it goes really south. So, you know, we really want to get people comfortable and safe experiencing different things in nature, and, you know, when people are connected to nature, they're not going to harm it. So, you know, that's, that's why we're trying to go a little bit upstream.
Yeah, so we are still doing things that we've always done, like we bring you the farmer's market every year. We also have two organic community gardens. We also have been lucky enough to partner with Ada and the Beautification Committee to be focused on and adopt a spot up the mountain at the Warwick Triangle, where we have native and medicinal plants growing there, and it's like a teaching garden. So those kinds of things for us, nature is still nourishment. Nature is still medicine. What we're starting to do now is focus on nature as an experience that helps you heal, helps you connect, helps you reduce stress, helps you in all the ways that nature can help us. Now, the way we're going to do that is we're going to create what we call the Nature Connection Portal. It's an online portal, and the intention of that is to drive more folks to this town to enjoy some of what's happening in nature, and not only this town, but our surrounding area, because if you're someone who's into nature, you tend to live here, but you're willing to drive about 30 minutes around. So our portal's going to be focused all the way from, say, Ringwood over to Vernon and up to Warwick and probably down to, yeah, like Kinlan and Booton. So part of our intention is to have an online portal that drives more people to events and be able to do things here in our town. It's also supposed to be a community-fed portal, so what I mean by that is we have a lot of experts in our town. We have, I think about like Don Weiss, who helped you with the map. He's an expert. He brings and leads hikes all the time. We have so many programs over at the Weiss Center for Education, so many at the Wallace Farmstead. There's so much going on, and yet if I'm a new family who's moved here and I have a stroller, I'm not sure where to park, I'm not sure where to go, I don't really know how to get what I need before, during, and after my nature experience. So what we want to do is make that an easy, curated, simple way to go and get that information and get the support we need. Part of that is making sure people can get to our local restaurants and retail, stuff they're going to need before, during, and after their experience. We're going to be partnering with many different businesses. We're hoping to have an opportunity to drive more business to our town here and the organizations and businesses that are here. So we hope it's going to become a, you know, a reservoir of knowledge where it's constantly curated through the town, and so there'll be people saying, hey, I really know that way we yawn to hike really well, and I can tell you where to park and which times of year it's really better, and sometimes it gets rained out, so you can't take the stroller. We want to get that kind of expertise available in addition to the, here's where you can go buy food, and here's where you can go get a sandwich. So we really want it to become something that the community curates with us. That's a big part of our intention. You know, we're hoping to really create some data for you guys and for all of us to see what really works, what doesn't, what's getting in the way of people connecting with what we have, and how can it actually support our township? You know, we feel there's some revenue opportunities that we're missing, that we can actually be generating more for our town. So we're looking for ways to collaborate down the road. We've already started with Parks and Rec and looking at how we can lift some of that up and make sure that that's available to more folks, and they can combine it together. As we go forward, we could use some of your support as an organization. We still do run the farmer's market and the community gardens, and we're trying to draw more people. We'd love to invite someone, or maybe the mayor, or all of you to our opening day on June 7th. We'd love you to come cut the ribbon for us, and we'll get a photo op and help everyone see how you guys have been supporting our farmer's market for so long, which we are very grateful for. There's a couple long-term things, too, we were talking about.
Yeah, I think one of the things we'd also like to partner, one of the groups we want to partner with is the Economic Development Committee, getting their feedback on how the portal can best support local businesses in a way that we can uplift, you know, everyone in the community and all different types of businesses. But at the same time, we want to really highlight those who have specific talents or passions that they're interested in and sharing those with our larger group.
You know, your map, we would love to make that the centerpiece of our bigger map. Maybe we can help you go online with it, you know? We'd love to be able to support that as the main place that people come to.
And if you're already a member of the Facebook group, you know, you'll see that it's a really supportive group that, you know, for example, somebody had a question about where they can get soil that they can trust from a trustworthy, you know, local business, and so that's, that's really the goal, is just to increase the education and awareness of all that this community has to offer, you know, and ultimately showcase all the beauty that West Milford has.
Yeah, and we hope maybe in two to three years, when we're getting 20, 25,000 people through this portal on a regular basis, it becomes a link on our township and actually starts to highlight some of what's happening here. So that's our vision, that's the change, that's the support we're hoping for, and we're excited for any of you who want to share with us what's going to work for you. We're having a meeting May 10th at the library, want to hear from people, what gets in your way, what helps inspire you, what helps make it easy for you, so we can bake that all into what we're doing. So that's it. That's us. Do you guys have any questions before we take off?
Second Tuesday in the month, 7:30, right in this room. EDC.
All right, that's good. Our meetings are Thursday. It works perfect. We'll be here.
Anything else? Any other questions or?
No, I do think it would be beneficial to possibly link up the map. We are quite a ways down the road with that, and it does have a digital aspect to it. So we are, I think, at the point of really ready to print it. So maybe just a quick, did you, have you seen it and looked it over?
No, no, we're excited to. We want to learn more about it.
She just learned about it last week.
Oh, really?
We were at the chamber meeting, she was just updating us. We were like, oh, my goodness, that could be an amazing way we could help lift that up and expand from there.
Yeah, we talked about doing QR codes at trailheads of what businesses are in, you know, your immediate area within, you know, a certain mile radius, so there is a plan underway, and I think that you can only help enhance whatever we're doing.
Amazing. We'd love to support that.
Today.
We just appreciate your guys' support of us over all the years when we've done the other stuff, and we're excited in our new direction.
And I have done the opening at the farmer's market, so be looking forward to doing it again.
Oh, good, yes, June 7th, 3:00 PM. Thank you.
June 7th.
June 7th, Wednesday, 3:00 PM, right over the Presbyterian Church. If you haven't been before, it's fun. June through October, 3:00 to 7:00 PM. Thanks.
All right. Next, we have the Friends of Wallace.
Okay, we thought somebody else was going to be here, one of our other friends.
You lost all your friends.
Do you want to, do you want to eat? Do you want to go last? I could do that.
Hey, we could switch your.
We could switch your position?
No? She's not here now. She's probably not here. Okay, and my other friend is still sitting in the chair.
Okay.
And there's another one.
All right.
All right, so we were just here. My name is Sue Lynch, and I'm the chair of the Friends of Wallace Homestead, and I wasn't prepared at all for this, but, oh, somebody's clapping, yeah. Maybe Wendy could speak for us. We did have a meeting with Wendy, went over, and so again, we're partnering, for all of you, for you don't know, the Friends of Wallace Homestead is over there, and we've been, the last 10 years, bringing the place from the ruins it was in and trying to fulfill the wishes of the Wallace Brothers, to have cultural events, recreational events, educational, thank you, which is what we do by, you know, art shows, music festivals, Christmas past. This year, we're going to be hosting the Friends of the Library Concert, so if anybody has time on their hands, we have more things that could be done, whether it's actually working on events, or if it's behind the scenes, or actually out there, you know, getting dirty. We could use anybody, but in the last 10 years, I really feel we've come a long way. We have accomplished much, and thanks to the town and Marilyn as our liaison, we've, I think, just think we're doing really well, so that's it.
You are.
I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. The Friends of Wallace have been wonderful to work with from a municipal standpoint. They've really taken that property, made many improvements to it, have brought different things. I love the Christmas past holiday house. It's unbelievable, and it's like an untapped resource that we can keep building on for events and things. So thank you for all your hard work, to all the committee members that volunteer. Again, to make that property what it is today and to continue to grow it, it's been amazing to see the difference. I mean, it's heart and soul. It really is, has been put into it.
Being able to be able to go there by the stream and hear the waterfall, and it's good.
Is one of your members on that one?
Yes, yes, he is.
Yes.
Did you take it off, did you?
No, it's still there. It's kind of caught by line.
Not yet.
All right. We have next on the agenda the West Milford Animal Shelter. How are you?
So good evening to Ms. Mayor, the council, and I guess some representatives also for the town. My name's Mary Lynn Haug, and I work at the West Milford Animal Shelter. I volunteer at the West Milford Animal Shelter. I should begin by saying we are 100% volunteer-run. We are a 501(c)(3), so we are a not-for-profit organization. We do receive a stipend from the town every year, which allows us to operate, and then there are rules under which we have our guidelines with both the township and the state. And then the rest of all of the revenue that we receive in order to operate comes all from donations from other people and other organizations. We probably have in any given year about 80 to 100 volunteers, all of whom We probably have, in any given year, about 80 to 100 volunteers, all of whom gather together and have different schedules to come in every morning and every evening, so there's 14 different crews that work every week. When we have some special other cases, we do have teams that come in in the midday, if we have animals that need some, a little more intensive care. Our hours of operation during the week are, our hours that we're open to the public during the week are 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and on the weekends, it's 10:00 AM to, it's 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Now, that's not to say that we're not there behind the scenes doing other things at other times of the day, but that's just when we are able to be open to the public, where we have enough volunteers that can accommodate helping people look around at animals, or answering questions, or accepting donations. Right now, oh, so right now, we really only have cats, dogs, and rabbits. We have, in the past, have had chickens, ducks, we've had a goat, we've facilitated in the moving of a horse. We maintain a few feral colonies around town, where there are a few cats that live outside, either near a business or a farm, and we maintain those properties, those colonies, with food, medical care, spay and neuter, of course, to make sure nobody's out there having babies. We do run a, we do run a spay-neuter program. We have a discounted coupon where anybody, whether you've gotten an animal from us or not in the past, you can come in and buy a coupon from us for a spay-neuter, for cats only, because they do represent more of a problem, because most people have a little bit more control over their dogs. It's not like we have packs of dogs running around, but we've got cats out there. So we bring the cost of a spay or a neuter down to a very reasonable price, and we facilitate that through partnering with three local veterinarians who help us with those kinds of visits. That said, we have a supervisory vet, we are required to by law, it's, we just don't, you know, we're not freewheeling over there. We have a veterinarian that we answer to. I am actually the health officer over there, which means I'm the medical and wellness coordinator. Any animal that comes through the door, I make sure they get all their vetting, their wellness appointments, their vaccinations, if there's any injuries. We do have a board of directors, like many other clubs or organizations, they're all elected, and again, 100% volunteer, nobody gets paid for anything that they do. So on our board of directors, we have, you know, like most other organizations, we have a president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, health officer, maintenance officer, and we, sometimes we have some subcommittees for things like fundraising, event coordinating. We do, we do some things during the year. Summer annual, I think most people probably get our annual letter, our annual fundraising letter, that goes out right around this time of year, right? We do a dog walk sometimes in the summer. We have done some tricky trays also, early, late summer, early fall, and we try to do a couple of other little fundraisers in and out when we can, depending on public interest and availability. If anybody has any questions, I just was prepared to give us, you know, a short five-minute presentation. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions. Thank you to all you do for the shelter.
Thank you.
It's been a well-run facility for many, many years, a great resource for the township, and, you know, I know you guys are always looking for volunteers.
We are, we are always looking for volunteers. You can come in, anybody can come in, send in your kids, send in whoever's home from college, you know, get them in, have them fill out a volunteer list. We're also always looking for fosters. We have a big need for people who can foster kittens, not, they're usually not, don't need to be bottle-fed, they usually don't need any special care, except they just need to grow up a little bit before they can go out into the world. So if you know anybody who would like to volunteer or foster, we have all those forms at the shelter, you can stop in anytime that we're open. All of our shift leaders are pretty well-versed in how to help answer those questions. Yeah, we're always looking for, we're always looking for people, because the college kids grow up and then go live their lives, and we lose them. So, you know, we do need some, we do need people all the time, believe it or not, so...
What were your hours again, that you're set for the public?
During the week, we're open to the public from 10:00 to 1:00.
And then 10:00.
And on the weekends, it's 10:00 to 3:00.
What's the youngest age?
If a child 16 or older can volunteer alone, we get a lot of phone calls for parents wanting their 11 or 12-year-old to volunteer. They are allowed to volunteer as long as the parent is on the premises. That means the parent can be either right there with their kid, or they can be in the lobby reading a book, you know, while we, and we never give them tasks that would put them in any danger, we give them some pretty benign, like, safe, but still needed, tasks to do, and that way they can get a feel for, you know, being a volunteer. We also do, we've got a reading program for kids that are super young and learning how to read, we've done in the past, which is super cute. The kids come in and read out loud in a large, in a cattery, where there's several cats, and that way they're practicing how to read, and the cats are getting used to the sound of people's voices.
Nice.
So it serves two purposes, and it's adorable. So, yeah, so anybody with kids or grandkids, you know, you can also send them our way as long as you're willing to be in the building while they're with us.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the West Milford National Day of Prayer Task Force.
Hi, everybody, my name is Sherri Parlato, and I'm only one of several people that have been coming together to get ready for the National Day of Prayer, which happens to be in a couple of weeks, so this is like lovely timing for everything. So what we've done this year is, we've been going out, and the first thing we did was, we went out and invited the heads of the different organizations in town, like our government, our police department, our fire department, people that, Chamber of Commerce. So we're trying to get the full scope of what makes up West Milford, because in the evening event of the National Day of Prayer, we're actually going to bring up, as Mayor Dale is one of our representatives for government, they're going to stand in proxy as representatives for their areas, and we're going to have the pastors in town from various churches pray for them and all of the people that work under them and for them, which is just lovely. The entire nation is involved in this endeavor to pray for America. I'm sure you all know, America needs prayer, and so we have been inviting and unifying that area, we're unifying our churches. You're going to see us, you're going to see posters all over town, we're going to be going out on the next two Sundays, passing out flyers, because we want everyone to come who can to participate in this. God says, "You have not if you ask not." Well, you know what, we need to start asking for our nation, for our own town, for our state, so that we can just become, you know, a safer place to live. So, yeah, it's, I just want to tell you just a real quick story. When that fire broke out last week, I think it started Wednesday, right?
Correct.
Did it start Wednesday? So on Friday, it was just set on our hearts to pray for these firemen that have been on the front lines, and we also prayed for you, Mayor Dale, as well. Thank you. For wisdom and for just all the challenges that I'm sure came that way for you. So when we started in prayer at 7:00 at night, the fire was 65% contained. When we left, just two hours later, it was at 95% contained. So we truly believe that when we asked God to help us, He did. The next morning, I believe it was out, even before the rain came, is that correct?
Correct.
So there's such power in prayer, so we're inviting everybody to come out, and one thing we are doing a little bit different this year, too, besides praying for our nation and our state and our community, we're going to have prayer teams that people who need prayer can receive prayer as well. So there's going to be a whole scope, there's going to be music, there's going to be refreshments and prayer, of course. So the events that are taking place this year, at 12:00, we're going to meet right over there at Veterans Park, then again, at the Board of Ed at 4:00.
Macapin Middle School.
I'm sorry?
Macapin Middle School?
The Macapin Middle School, the cafeteria is at 7:00 at night, and that's going to be the large event where we're going to have the prayer teams, areas for prayer for people to, you know, can come and pray. We're going to have prayer points, if you're not quite sure maybe the names of some people, because we are going to provide names of all of our representatives in the state, in our community as well. So there'll be, there'll be areas, if you've got a heart for the fire, there's going to be places for you to go and just get some tips on prayer. So that's it, so we hope you can make it out. You'll probably be seeing a bunch of volunteers out there passing out flyers.
Thank you so much. Look forward to participating. All right, our famous cable TV commission, brought to you live by this group.
There he goes.
Yeah. Usually I'm behind the camera.
Yeah, he's up front.
If you don't mind, before you start, we have a board meeting, actually, to go to, so we're going to go.
Understand, so just ask that you pause for one second, Bob, and so...
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. We're WM 77, the TV station, my name is Bob Nicholson, the chair, this is Jeff Belafonte and June Anderson, photographer. Nathan Bedford, our other commissioner, is on assignment tonight filming school events. So we tried to get around and do everything. I'd like to thank the council and their generosity in supporting us, it's been about 10 years we've been doing this, and they've been very supportive and continue on, and we're excited to do some projects that we do. The main thing we need is like some help and volunteers. We had a goal, and we'd like to be 100% local programming. It's really hard for a public access station to do that, but you need a lot of people that try to help them film stuff. One of the programs we do, which I think is really good, Nathan films, Dan, the rec director, monthly, he gives a report, what's going on in recreation, in community services, for all different things, and that's good, we'd like to expand that to some other department heads and, you know, and go on with the library building, you know, and everything on that. But we need volunteers. Usually, I know high school kids are pretty well, their time is taken up for the 100 different projects, but a lot of college students and films, we would welcome them, and a lot of retirees like ourselves that have a lot of time during the day, because there's a lot of things that could be during the day that help out. One of our commissioners, Ruth Ann, she does a lot of the marketing, reach out to the various organizations to advertise your event, send us a poster, because the more people that find out about your event, the more successful it would be. Even, we expanded to garage sales, people who have been advertising for a small nominal fee, that you could advertise your thing, and it's been relatively really good. Like I said, like I said, our projects. And the last other thing that I just really want to talk about is that we belong to an organization called JAG, Jersey Access Group. It's a, well, I'm going to let Jeffrey talk about it in more detail, but essentially, it helps out the communities, what's going on with the cable visions and the rates and everything else to help you, which I know internet is a big problem, everybody in town's complaining about a monopoly, so we're working on that and doing that. So now, I'm going to present it over to Jeffrey, and he's going to give you a little overview.
Yeah, well, the JAG, Jersey Access Group, is really a trade organization, we represent over 50 municipal channels throughout the state, and we keep track of things like legislation that affects cable television rates, and we argue for municipal rates to be reasonable in front of the BPU. In fact, Mayor, we were even part of that meeting that you attended to try and get Altis in line, which is always a trick. But in any case, the municipality has supported JAG for many years, and I'm here to tell, this is all a surprise to some people, that JAG is going to recognize West Milford and the mayor and our two council liaisons, Marilyn and Ada, with our Municipal Community Excellence Award.
Oh, wow.
It will be, well, we thank you for your support and for the generous support that you've given us this year. The award is given on May 18th at our annual conference, at our luncheon, and you're invited to attend. We'd have you all attend if you'd like, but it's a municipal excellence award, and we thank you for your support. You know, JAG is, there are a lot of big cities involved with JAG, with big television channels, Woodbridge, Bloomfield, Newark. We're a small fish in this pond, but we really appreciate the support that we get from the township, and that's what the municipal excellence award is all about. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
And we hope you'll come and attend.
Thank you.
Just one more thing I'd like to add is, like, and what we do and the help that we need, all different people, marketing, photographers, for instance, June is the president of West Milford Camera Club, they go hand in hand. So we have the media all around, so we could use any help we can do, and actually, they have a display across the street, right?
Yeah, upstairs.
You want to talk about it?
It's above the library, you know?
It's part of our commission, you know, to do that, but...
It's a gallery, basically, of our work.
Very nice.
Go check it out.
And it's all local. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the West Milford Fire Department.
My name is Rich, I'm with the West Milford Fire Department. Obviously, someone said Volunteer Night tonight, so what better way to grab volunteers than to come to Volunteer Night? So, West Milford made up of 82 square miles, we have six volunteer fire companies in town, we have probably about between 200, 250 members right now between the six companies. We respond to all types of emergencies, rescues, fires, major battle of brush fires for four days, but we do have other types of incidents, we go to ice rescues, water rescues, help out, EMS, our lovely police department, okay, we always work with them very, very well, and other different types of large-scale incidents. We train every week, variety of topics, obviously, we've got to keep our skills sharp, we go to the academy sometimes throughout the year, we go to either Passaic County Fire Academy, Bergen County, and also Sussex County academies as well. You definitely have the type of a family atmosphere when you come through the doors, you meet a lot of cool people, a lot of new people, you learn a lot of life skills, do a lot of different PR tasks, go to, I'm sorry, the firework details, Alf, we have the burn bill, sorry, the smoke trailer for Alf, we teach the kids stop drop and roll, you know, how to crawl out of a house, escape plans, different types of little learning curves there. You also learn stuff for your own self, for life skills, different building construction, how buildings are made, different types of requirements that buildings need to be up to code, tying knots, some crazy knots out there that could do a lot of cool stuff. So you get to learn different skills such as that. All the fire companies have their own social media platforms on Instagram and Facebook, when they're not hacked, there are some pretty good information that are put out. Company Four's got hacked over the weekend when the fire broke out, so, but you can find everybody on Instagram and Facebook from 1 to 6. You have Appso Company One, which is located on Macapin Road by the Old Town Tavern, call it Lower Macapin. Company Two is out on the highway, right in the area of Paradise Road. You have Company Three, which is over on Greenwood Lake Turnpike. Company Four is on Macapin by the high school. Five... Five is on Warwick Turnpike, up in Upper Greenwood Lake, and you have Company Six right here on Ridge Road next to the First Aid Squad Building. If you're interested, drill nights, everyone drills the same night on Mondays between the hours of seven and nine, I'm sorry, seven and 10, in between there at some point. You go up, check out the company, pick up an application. You can join as low as the age of 16. You start off as a junior, then once you turn 18, you go to fire school. It's about five-ish months, three days a week for your Fire One certification. And then once you pass your Fire One certification, you then become a full-fledged firefighter. It's not, it's fun, but it's not fun. At the same time, you're going to see people at their worst day, but it also gives you a sense of pride to go and help somebody. So if you're interested, you could stop by in your local firehouses Monday between nine and, I'm sorry, seven and 10 at night. So that's all I got. Sure.
Thank you so much. And I will address the fire formally after this, but it has never been more apparent how amazing this group of people are than last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And to consider the magnitude of the potential impact to our township and how it was handled, you know, everybody coming together, whether it was businesses or residents or surrounding communities, and just the people that come here every day and they, they do this, they volunteer, and it's not, I think for the faint of heart, to say I'm going to run into a fire to, to, you know, protect or save families. So we are incredibly, incredibly grateful for you and for everyone who just volunteers in this town. We have such an awesome town, so many people who volunteer, who do great things for this town, and what makes it so great. And it was just to me, really overwhelming as that fire was, was happening, to see, you know, everything that happened, just people working together and doing the right thing for, for the community. And I've never been more grateful for our fire department in my entire life of living here, or just, you know, being a part or being a leader within the community. So thank you again, and thank you for being here. And hopefully, people do volunteer, because it is, it does take time, and it's, it's a big commitment. So please consider helping with at least one of the organizations that we're seeing here tonight. Next, we have the West Milford Rotary Club. We have two more after that, so I'm just kind of, need one add to the agenda. Hi Cindy, how are you? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
She's a fire mom, fire mom, fire wife, and now Rotary as well, so.
Add it to the list.
And Rees Across America, just, yeah, we'll just say.
I'm stepping in for Amy Bennett, who's the president of Rotary. Just to give you a quick insight on what Rotary was, is, West Milford Rotary has been active in the community since 1959. Our volunteer organization focuses on our efforts on the needs of the local community. Through our major fundraising efforts, we provide multiple scholarships for the high school, support local food pantries, support our first responder organizations, and a host of other projects, including the beautiful gazebo at Bubbling Springs, the dictionary project, community message boards, Christmas in July at Milford Manor, which we're happy to say is coming back this year after COVID, and the patriotic flags that you see at Bubbling Springs Park every November. We also have some new upcoming projects, is we're going to include a local pollinator garden, and we are also looking to add some little libraries throughout the township as well. We meet every Tuesday at 12:15 at Jimmy G's, and the first Thursday every month at 5:30 at Uncork for Happy Hour. We invite you to stop by to learn more, you can join us for lunch, drink at Uncork, and explore our membership in our dynamic club. We also have a golf outing coming up May 17th. And just so you a little more about Rotary, you don't have to be a business owner, you could just be somebody that is in town that really wants to give back to the community in any way you possibly can. It's, we support all kinds of different organizations, from veterans to Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, the softball team, wherever we can get our hands involved, there's all different kinds of people that join, and together we try to build and better the community through these efforts. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have the Awesome Women's Club of West Milford.
Hi, everyone. I'm Diana Vargo. I'm the president of the West Milford Women's Club. With me I have Tina Ree, who is the vice president, and Bonnie Earl, who is the secretary. Like everyone else, we are volunteers also for the community, and I want to thank everyone for this opportunity to speak and get our message out to you. We are dedicated to, we're a service organization that's dedicated to enhance and enrich the community. Fortunately, we were able to do our, our main fundraiser this year at Victorian Christmas at Ringwood Manor. So that fundraiser helps us to help the community, and, you know, and since COVID, we're just getting back, and we did very well this year. So we're able to give back to the community. We do scholarships for the high school students, we donate to our first responders, to our, our American Legion, to our fire departments, as well as, you know, we do blankets for the animal shelter, and continue to make scrub hats and masks for Chilton and the, and PPEs for the, the family community centers, or anyone who needs that, that, those supplies. We donate to food pantries along with helping out the Meals on Wheels. We did, this February, we did cookie bowls to, to provide to the Camp Hope and the Meals on Wheels. We donate baskets for Paradise Noel's Middle School for their tricky tray, and also for the animal shelter, we've donated to their tricky tray as well. Our federations, on our federation side, we fill holiday stockings for Operation Yellow Ribbon, which is giving stockings to overseas for the military. We participate in Rees Across America, we provide stamps for the wounded warriors, we collect eyeglasses for the needy, and make blankets for Project Lioness. Those are some of the donations and the, what we, we do for the community and whoever may need that. We do meet every, or the second Monday of the month at the Echo Lake Baptist Church, so if anyone's interested in, in joining us or just seeing what we do for the community and just getting involved with our group, we'd welcome to have you. This year's federation project is also doing in the Emanuel Cancer Foundation, so we're, we're doing that for local children in need. We've also provided them with backpacks. We helped the Family Success Center, Highland Family Success Center with backpacks. We did Easter baskets for them this year as well. And, you know, we, our communications chairperson, Pat Spurko, does send out, works with a messenger to get our information out to them, so, but if there's anyone that's interested, we've also participated in the farmer's market, and, and craft fairs in town. So if anyone is interested, though, in joining us, we, we have a website, or email, actually, that's Women's Club of West Milford, so that's WOMAN, W-O-M-A-N, club, westmilford@gmail.com. I have cards, if anyone's interested in taking one before you leave. We, we do need volunteers, and we're a small group, but we are growing. We did, we were able to get seven new members this year, which we're very proud of, and we look forward to seeing anyone or assisting anyone that is in, in need of help. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you do. Last, but certainly not least, we have the Friends of the Library. How are you?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Carol Hines. I'm the president of the Friends of the West Milford Township Library. I'm new. You might know Marty Tappan, who was our president for 22 years. So we are looking at growing more. We are a nonprofit organization, and we just had our major membership drive, and we have nearly 100 members. Forty-two are new this year. So we are doing a lot of fundraising activities in support of the library, and the library is such a wonderful community meeting place for many of these volunteer organizations that talked about going to the library and having their meeting. We have our meeting also at the library, and we do need more volunteers for our fundraising events. We, we have managed to supply the library with all the computers that you walk into the library and sit down to do your reference material or anything that you want to research, as well as information at home. And we do help the library with other activities that they have. We are planning this fall, a, not only our book sale that we have every September, but hopefully in November, we're going to have a book festival in conjunction and cooperation with the, with the library, an outdoor event. And we are fortunate that our Monday night summer concert series that we have had for the past 23 years will continue, no longer at the grounds of the old library, but will be hosted, thankfully, by the Friends of the Wallace Homestead. So we will have a new location, and we hope that all of you can come and enjoy some good music from rock music to jazz, bluegrass, and we even have a, an accordion player in one of our jazz trios. So it'll, it'll be an assortment of music, and some of you know the Coots, they will, they will kick off our summer concert program. We are a group of, like I said, nearly 100 people. We have a monthly newsletter, and we do welcome new members all the time, and new skill sets too. We have a couple people who have worked for nonprofit organizations, and we also do a lot of committees. So we have a program committee, we have a technology committee, we have, let's see, a couple different committees beyond the technology. We, we try to do some publicity, so we have a publicity committee, and we have a grant writing committee. So any, anybody who would like to volunteer and has some, offer some skill set of their own, we would welcome you. We would welcome you even if you didn't have those skills, because we, we do want people to appreciate the library as a community center in our town as much as we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, well, great job by all. We're going to take, I'm going to say a 10-minute break, which usually turns into 15 minutes. Please enjoy some refreshments, meet each other, and then we will reconvene the meeting to go into executive session. Okay, great. We are back from our intermission to enjoy some refreshments and speak to our volunteers and the people who did presentations this evening. And next on the agenda is Executive Session Resolution Number 2023-155, which is a motion for executive session, litigation, Newark watershed tax appeal. And I have a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
All right. Be it resolved at the Township Council of West Milford on the 19th day of April 2023, prior to the conclusion of the regular meeting, the governing body shall meet an executive session from which the public shall be excluded to discuss matters permitted pursuant to NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12 subsections B7, pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations other than in subsection B4 herein, or matters falling within the attorney-client privilege. Attorney-client privilege, once again noted as Newark watershed litigation. All right, we have a motion in a second, so we're breaking, and we will be back. It is 7:14, and we will be moving on to the ordinance number 2023-008, amending Chapter 152 of fire prevention and adding a new section, rapid entry amended. And I know, Mike, you're here to speak about it. If the question, Council had some questions last time. Do you want to come up and address the Council with any of their questions, concerns, comments?
We made some changes, as everybody saw, so, I know I spoke to a few of you, so, any question?
I like the changes.
Yeah. I like them too.
Okay.
By the way, you can just mention, Mike, it's not going to affect that many, you were saying.
Correct. Probably a handful of existing buildings, it would, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, have anybody other questions? Consensus to move it forward?
So move.
So we can put it in for introduction?
Yes.
Tonight.
You want to put it in for introduction tonight, or on the next?
We can, if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'll take a motion to introduce.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Councilman Eric.
Yes.
Councilman Azuka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Littenberg.
Yes.
Councilman Goodser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. And we'll be going to action items with finance matters. We have our CFO here this evening, ordinance number 2023-001. Ellen, did you want to, and it includes 12 as well? Did you?
I can, do you want to talk when you get to the budget? Or do you want?
Sure. It's up to you, first or second. Okay. Ordinance to exceed, my goodness, ordinance 2023-001, 011, ordinance to exceed calendar year 2023 municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cap bank, NJSA 40A colon 4 dash 4 or 5 dot 14. A second reading and public hearing for this ordinance is set for the workshop meeting of the Township Council, which is set for May 17th, 2023. Notice of the public hearing shall be published in the Herald News on or about April 25th. Motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll take roll call.
Councilman Eric.
Yes.
Councilman Azuka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Littenberg.
Yes.
Councilman Goodser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
Thank you. We have ordinance number 2023-012, which is a bond ordinance appropriating $4,550,500 and authorizing the issuance of $3,899,000 in, zero, in bonds, 3.89 million, and notes for the township for various improvements, purposes authorized to, undertaken by the township of West Milford in the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey. A second reading and a public hearing for this ordinance is also set for the workshop meeting of the Township Council, which is scheduled for May 17th, 2023. Notice of this public hearing shall be published in the Herald News on or about April 25th.
So move.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Eric.
Yes.
Councilman Azuka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Littenberg.
Yes.
Councilman Goodser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
We're going to do Resolutions Number 2023, 156 through 158, Ellen.
Okay, so everybody should have gotten their budget books the end of last week. Bill and I met with all of the department heads to get their requests. We sat down together to go through them, decide which we thought should be included, what shouldn't be included. It is a pretty difficult time with inflation being so high, vehicle parts are very expensive, everything is up. Our snow budget, salt is really expensive, it's up like 54% from 2021. So it was a bit of a challenge, but for the current fund, the levy has remained unchanged from last year. We're using about, we're using 3.75 million in surplus, which is a little bit above what we used last year. The one challenge that we're going to have is that we got money through the American Rescue Plan, we used half of it last year, 1.3 million, we're going to use the other half this year to support government services. That's the last year. So next year, we'll have 1.3- So next year, we'll have 1.3 million in a revenue source that we're not going to have next year. So next year is going to be a bit more of a challenge. Hopefully, inflation goes down and we will be able to reduce some of our expenditures.
Perfect.
Just some of the things that we included, $10,000 for the West Milford 77 camera, $13,000 for the trail maps. We moved parks and community services, other expenses to public properties in an effort to streamline our purchasing and to more align with the organizational chart. Bill had made some changes with, with the way that the parks was being run. That's really it for the current fund. Our solid waste budget, there's an increase of 2% in the levy. That's because of the contract for the collection of the solid waste and the recycling. Also, disposal of co-mingles has skyrocketed. This year so far, for the first three months, we've spent $36,000. Last year, it was 5.7 for the same time period, 5.7,000. So that is another huge increase to our solid waste.
Any questions, Council? Nope.
Okay. So we'd like to introduce the budget tonight and then have a public hearing on the 17th of May.
Perfect. That's resolution number 157, the solid waste. So a motion and a second for 156 through 158?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Eric.
Yes.
Councilman Azuka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Littenberg.
Yes.
Councilman Goodser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for your patience. We will open to public comments now. Once, if you are here to address the Council for any reason, I'm just going to explain, these are not my rules. They are the ground rules of the form of government that we have. It is not a back-and-forth conversation. You get to speak for five minutes at the podium. You'll raise your hand, I'll select you. You'll approach the podium and your name and address for the record. I have a little timer up here, so at five minutes, I will stop you. And then the next person will raise their hand, and I'll choose them, and they'll come to the podium to address the Council. Once all the comments are made by the public, the Council then has an opportunity to address back if they so choose. All right? So I see some new faces here. I just want to explain, I'm just the keeper, the timer, and the flow of the meeting. Please don't get mad at me when I stop you or the Council, because it seems like we have quite a few people to get through. If you are here to speak, if you could raise your hand, I will call on you, and you can come and name an address for the record, please.
So my name is Rachel Bowman. I live at 43 Leonard Avenue in West Milford. I've been a resident of West Milford now for 20 years. I have been deeply involved with the swim team at Bubbling Springs for the last 10. My daughter's 16. She's not here tonight. But these are some of the kids that I've worked with over the years. We were told in March by phone call that the swim team was being disbanded from Bubbling Springs. We were a little shocked. We have a very good team. We have about 40 families involved in the team and over 70 kids. Just last year, I'd say there are people actually in this room whose kids swam in the past. We have people whose kids whose kids now have kids on the team. It has a huge history, and it has a great impact on our, on our children. Ethan started when he was five. How old are you now?
Eight.
Eight. Rachel started when she was four. How old are you now?
Nine.
Nine. Her sister is 17, also started at the young age of six and is a lifeguard for Bubbling Springs. It's a program that feeds Bubbling Springs. It's a program that helps Bubbling Springs grow, and it really has a huge impact on our youth. So we understand that there are reasons for things, but we want to know if it's open to discussion. And that's what a majority of the parents are in the room for tonight.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Council?
You all came here.
Okay. Sorry, okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Sourtag-Pilar. I live at 80 Paradise Road. I've been in the town for just about 23 years now. I have two children. One is a senior right now at high school. My other daughter is a junior at University of Delaware doing chemical engineering, three minors. They both swam on the West Milford Swim Team. I was shocked when I heard that it was being cut, that we were not, had a chance to explain to you what this has been to our community. I don't know if you ever have anybody who's been involved in the team, and I have to only guess that you don't, because if you would never have considered cutting it if you don't know anybody involved. I, my best friend moved from here to Virginia, and when she left, I'm an artist, and I made a painting for her, and the painting was of our four kids. My two girls were in their West Milford Swim Team bathing suits, because there was a meet that day. After they were older, and I wasn't chasing my little ones around the sand, the only reason we went to Bubbling Springs was for the meets and for the training, which was every day. The cost couldn't have been better. It was $68 when my youngest started. Now it's like 150 for nine weeks of every day of activity, of competition. I hear you want to put on one of these slides in a boat, and all I could think of was that every time you go down a slide, maybe two, three times, thrill is over. But the thrill of chasing a blue ribbon and getting that every time, or almost every time, that doesn't die. The kids keep coming back. Also, our town is huge. My kids played tons of sports. They were in soccer. They were in field hockey. They were in lacrosse. But only in swim did they, on the same team together. Only in swim did they have teammates that were older than them, that were younger than them. So they had to learn how to deal and how to be a friend and a teammate to them. They became leaders easily. We cheered for kids. I was on the bench, because I was a volunteer. I did the scoring. I did the snack band. I did the timing. Timing was the best, got the best tan of my life. But I'd be there, and we're rooting these kids on. And if you never had the experience of watching a five-year-old for the first time swim from one end to the other, and the water is here, and the entire beach is yelling for that kid to get there, they're not going to learn that from a slide. That's grit. It's perseverance. It's dedication. So I really feel that you really need to rethink what you're doing. I understand the cost is a very important issue. I understand that. I'm in the school system. I get it. Cuts have to be made. But please, consider the human quality of our community and the things that our community is here for, to bring us together. It's one small lake in a town full of lakes, and people come here for that. And when we go and we visit other lakes because we're competing, and we come back to Bubbling Springs, we got what a jewel we have, because some of those lakes suck. I just really hope that you understand what this is. It's not just a swim team. It's education. It's perseverance. It's community. It's friends. It's when you go to another school for the first time, because we have five separate elementary schools, and you walk into that big scary Mackin for the first time, and you see an eighth grader who knows you. That makes a big difference. It's priceless. Whatever you're trying to save money-wise, it's going to hurt in a far different way. Your pocketbook might be a little bit lighter, but then a child's going to be a lot lighter, too. So please reconsider. Please ask questions. Please find out. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Robert Nolan. One winding way for the past 42 years. I had four daughters who were on the swim team, and now I have two grandchildren who are on the swim team. So it's, I have a, you know, just reiterate what the previous speaker just said about what kids learn from being on the swim team. The older kids are role models for the younger kids. Eventually, the younger kids become the role models, grow up, they're now the role models. And that's where you get your lifeguards from, for Bubbling Springs, the kids that are on the swim team. And then some of them, if they're good swimmers, they go on to, when my daughter swam, West Milford High School didn't have a swim team, so they swam for the Lakeland Hills Y. And one of my daughters was good enough, she qualified for the YMCA Nationals three years in a row. So swimming's, you know, it's, it's a good sport, and I think the reason people, the parents are upset was because there was no prior notice. All of a sudden, like two days before your last council meeting, which was March 15, by the way, the swim team, the swim team's been canceled. And I did reach out to the mayor, and I said, "Mayor, any mail?" I emailed to Council people. I only had the courtesy of a reply from the mayor, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor. What, what the mayor said in her email was that multiple factors went into the decision, including future plans that the township has for our community. So I guess, you know, my questions would be, was this presented to the Rec Advisory Committee, and are there any swim team parents on that Rec Advisory Committee? And then, and I guess at this point, nobody knows what the, what the future plans are. But there's a difference between summer swimming and winter swimming. In the summer, the kids want to swim outside in a pool. In the winter, they have to swim indoors. And, you know, so the serious swimmers swim year-round, but the, anybody that swims in the summer is a much better swimmer than kids that, that don't, that don't, that learned to swim, but they're not on the swim team. So you, there were some quotes that you got. It was a quote back in October from a company called Custom Docks, and it was, he quoted $8,000 to repair the docks. And there was another company, you got a quote in November from Great Northern, and his quote was $11,664. Then you got a, went out and got quotes for totally replacing the docks, but that was after, after I sent in Oprah request, asking, asking for those quotes. But one of them was for $110,000 for a new dock. But in his quote, he said he thought the docks were in good shape, and he gave a repair quote of $34,500. Now, I know every year, we're spending money to maintain fields, mowing grass and picking up garbage, and, you know, all the other costs involved in, in maintaining the softball, baseball, soccer field. And at some point, you're going to need to replace the turf field up to high school. That's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So in the overall scheme of things, the swim team does not cost the township a lot of money. And if you, if you repair, if you spend, say, $11,000 to repair the dock, the dock's probably going to last you another 10 years, so it's basically a cost of $1,000 a year. You just bonded for $4.5 million. Somewhere, you know, you might be able to find room for that. And, you know, there's also, you have, the Open Space Fund is divided into purchasing open space and also for, for things like this. I mean, that could, that, the repair to dock could come out of the Open Space Fund. The county has an Open Space Fund. You could apply to the county. Maybe, maybe they might pick up the tab. So just, you know, listen, listen to the parents, and they'll let you know how important the, the team was. And, you know, as a parent, I know, because I had four daughters who, who swam for the team, and it, I think the good kids that they are was because of their involvement with the swim team. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Colleen Fraser, 15 Bissett Drive. I did want to start by thanking the fire department, because the fire, I live in Highview, and it got very close. I packed my car. So you guys did a great job. But I am here tonight in support of the swim team. I swam there when I was four years old with my three older sisters, and now my kids are on the team, five and six years old. I did email several Council members, the mayor and the rec director, and the mayor, you were the only one that reached out and called me. But quickly, I realized from a conversation, you were misinformed on several things about the team, which is unfortunate that you're not getting the right information. When we spoke, I was blindsided to hear that the docks needed to be completely replaced, because we all volunteer. The meets don't happen without parents volunteering for timing, officiating, whatever. The docks were holding 40 people up every meet. They did not need to be completely replaced, and the quote you got in October stated that. And the guys came back in March and said the same thing, that the frames were in good condition. So the public, the swim team, and lake members had no input about the future of the lake. You mentioned to me on the phone that you have big plans in the future, which is great. My kids live here. I want that to happen, but you should not cancel the team until those plans are in place. You're taking out a huge piece. It's vital to our kids to learn how to swim. There are so many lakes in this town, and I, we've done Goldfish Swim School for years and years. You don't see improvement like you see from lap swimming. And I don't live in a lake community, and I, I can't get them to swim lap swimming at Goldfish Swim School. It's different kids. It's not kids from their school. It's, you know, we're asking that you can make the repairs to keep the team at Bubbling like it has been for over 30 years. And without keeping the team in place, you're losing lifecards. You're going to lose the high school swim team, which wasn't in place when I was in high school. You're just, you're losing scholarships. Like my dad said, my sister had the swim scholarship. My kids, since I live in Highview, are being redistricted in the fall. So they're already getting sent to Apshua, and now the swim team is also being taken away from them. Like, how much more do my kids have to go through? I just think that the day camp is a huge moneymaker for the team, and my kids attend the day camp, and you're going to lose out on some enrollment. I don't want them out in a kayak in the middle of the lake if I'm not there supervising them. Lifeguards are teenagers. They get distracted. Inflatables in the lake, that's all distractions. You lose sight of a kid for a minute, drowning a silent, okay? I think there's a tragedy that can happen by taking away the swim team. And it's really important that you guys listen to us and understand the importance of having strong swimmers and, versus inexperienced swimmers in that lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I am actually speaking on behalf of--
Name an address for the record, please.
I'm speaking on behalf of Vicki Evans.
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is April Kleiner. I'm a resident of Kennel.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of Vicki Evans, 36 Heritage Drive, West Milford. She had a death in her family and is unable to attend tonight's meet. My boys are 15 and 17 and have been members of West Milford Devil Race since the age of five. It has given them summer friends and a lifetime of memories, and also made them into two of the best swimmers I know. I never needed to worry about them near water, nor did any of their friends' parents need to worry about their children, because my two would have always been there to help. I have been one of the main volunteers for the team for years, a representative to the town, a representative to both the Ramapo League and the Lakeland League, which are the two leagues that the team has competed in for years. I was a summer swim official for the summer leagues, and over the years, my boys joined winter leagues as well, as their love of swim grew. They are now eligible to become lifeguards and are decided against it, and one of the main reasons is the inflatable and the hazardous presence to the lifeguards working and trying to keep people safe. In the past 30 years, the swim team has been one of the biggest sources of lifeguards for Bubbling Springs. Kids that have spent years on the swim team are some of the strongest swimmers in the area, and because they love spending time at the lake, they choose to become lifeguards and spend their entire summer at the lake. Last year and for many years in the past, staffing Bubbling Springs with enough lifeguards has been difficult, and I can only imagine, without the swim team drawing older kids to the lake, they will move on to other things. Last year, my boys decided they no longer wanted to be a part of the team, and I was, I was still there, however, advising new parents, helping out the coach, and being an unofficial team mom. Though I stepped back, letting others take over and run the snack stand, distribute team swimsuits and gear. This team is run by volunteers, and despite not having a parents board, there are still parents willing to step up and help run the meets. New parents coming in every year and getting involved to give their children the swim team experience. A swim team is so much more than numbers on paper. It is a proven fact that learning to swim saves lives. Swimming is a fantastic form of exercise that is a whole-body workout. When many children prefer to stay inside and play video games, swim team is something they would get excited about and a good way of keeping them active and healthy. I sincerely hope you rethink the decision to cancel the swim team, as it has so much to offer to the children of our town. Vicki Evans.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think you had your hand up next.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Erin Dever, 46 Tinsel Avenue. I run a middle school, and I'm so nervous about this for some reason. But anyway.
Take your time.
My name is Erin Dever. I live at 46 Tinsel Avenue. My children were on the swim team for their first year last summer. It was a great experience, and we've been talking about it all year, about joining the West Milford Devil Rays this summer. I understand the finances of towns and schools are under a lot of distress, and I understand it's disappointing when you have to cancel programs. But it's also very disappointing when you see approval in town minutes and then told the team has been canceled. I wish the, the concerns about the team had brought, been brought to the attention of the team during last season. As you heard other parents say, we worked together. I volunteered to be a runner the first swim meet. I had no idea what I was expecting. I was up and down the dock, passing papers. It was like I had never been part of a swim team before, so it was a whole new experience for me. When looking over some of the funds from the requested paperwork, it looks like the team was short like about $250. I think all of us would have given you $250 from our pockets. I feel like the transparency of the town, it's been lacking. The quotes for the docks, some were $20,000. And then, you got a recent quote for over $100,000 with some words highlighted or quoted about how expensive things were going to be. And those quotes were after the last town council meeting and after the last Oprah request. The cost of the new boats, the six-foot slide, I don't know if you've considered how much the insurance is going to go up when you put something like that in the lake, extra lifeguards. All these things seem to also increase the cost of the Bubbling Springs budget. I think most team members would also agree that we would be willing to join Bubbling Springs just to be a part of the team. I also think we would have also been happy to pay more to be a part of the team. My son just wrote a personal narrative. To get him to write anything is impossible, but he chose the swim team, how he was set up to race against kids more older, older than him, and how he won. And for a kid that's not good at team sports, that was really awesome to see. I just really hope you consider the decision and let us have the team for the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, sir?
Hello. My name is Jeffrey Dever. That's my wife. I'm not as emotional as her. I'm factual. That's all right. I think that I know each and every one of who I voted for here. And going through the paperwork, I have to say, it's kind of like crazy that I'm reading an engineering report where a guy's handwriting it. I mean, if anybody's done any type of work in this town, engineering stuff, it didn't look professional. It looked like a real quick quote after we got the Oprah request. To make the decision to cancel something over $250 when you have other sports and other things going on, and you want to make a blow up or slide, and you're going to have more insurance, insurance costs and hiring lifeguards, it's difficult to have the lifeguards in the first place. $250, I think we, we could probably pull that out of our pocket right now. You should have probably had, asked all the parents and who's involved before you make this type of decision, because it impacts a lot of the kids. It's a great sport to be a part of, the swimming. Teaches other children, it's like, you know, these younger kids now, they can't continue the program. They don't learn how to swim. How about that? How about that impacts other people? What about a young kid? Now, he can't learn how to swim in his own town? He's got a, you expect him to go somewhere else? What happens if something happens to that young kid, and he had the opportunity to use this program to learn how to swim and to be part of the community and do that? Some kids don't want to play football. Some kids don't want to play baseball. Some kids don't want to do those type of sports. They want to do the swimming. And I think, you know, I think it's important that your constituents should be asked before you close these programs, especially over $250 cost. Does not make sense to me. And it's disappointing. But we can, we can always vote. That's what we, that's what we're here to do. I'll vote. That's what I'll, that's how, you know, show my voice, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Tracy Goodman, 7 Bergen Drive. Thank you very much. I spoke to a couple of council members. I appreciate your time. I too am here to speak about the cancellation of the Devil Rays swim team. To say that we were blindsided is an understatement. We just got a phone call mid-March saying that the program was gone. I've lived in the town for 18 years. My son is currently in sixth grade at McAppan. We got him started in this program and once, when he was much younger. And speaking to parents and getting to know parents and coaches, I was really surprised at the history of this team, that it goes back over 30 years. And I've come to know a lot of people in the town who are not necessarily connected to the swim team, who I've spoken to, and they have fond memories of being on the swim team when they were younger. And the fact that I know that there are members on the team right now whose parents were also on the team when they were younger, I mean, this is a legacy program. This is something that, in a town that has so many lakes and places to swim, this is a great program. It's been run incredibly well. I'm so proud to have been part of it for so long, and I hope it continues. As I said, my son is in sixth grade at McAppan, and he walked in the first day knowing so many kids because of the swim program. And the fact that you have boys and girls on the same team, different age levels, he walked into middle school, which can be a horrible transition. I'm a middle school teacher. I live it all the time. He walked in not only knowing kids in his grade, he knew kids in the seventh grade, kids in the eighth grade. And to be able to walk down a middle school hallway and have an eighth grader high-five you is an incredible thing for a middle schooler. He is incredibly disappointed that the team is being cut. He said to me his first season on the Devil Rays that the lake is his happy place. And I'm just really disappointed to see that this possibly is the end result. And so, I'm hopeful that we can kind of keep a conversation going about this, because I'm, I can't believe this is possibly the end. So, I'm hoping that the door can be opened and that the parents have an opportunity to be part of a solution. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is April Kleiner. I'm a Kinnon resident. However, my son has been a member of the West Milford Devil Rays for the past two years. We are not eligible for either of the swim teams in Kinnon, as they're both lake communities and are closed to outside members. I'm here to talk about the swim team. West Milford is a unique team, and they're a town team that also welcomes outside children. The team is also the only one in the area to offer afternoon practices that make it more accessible to working parents. Over the past month, I've probably researched every team in the area, and is the only one that has anything in the afternoons. And that was really one of the major reasons we chose West Milford. I want to take a look at the timeline of events from October 6th to the present that leads me to believe the closing of this team has been planned since last year, and no one felt it was necessary to inform the members of the team until last month, when there's not much time for parents to react and change their plans. My summer plans started being scheduled in January and were scheduled to have afternoons open for swim team practice. On October 6th, a SWAT document was submitted to Dan, the rec director, regarding the strengths and weaknesses of the swim team. The docks needed some repairs, and the parents board had lost some members that had not been replaced. While no team is perfect, there were some new volunteers the past year, taking over as a swim team statistician and running the snack stand. The snack stand is necessary for the swim team, as by the time swim meets started, both the lake and the town concession stand were closed. On October 12th, an estimate was given by Custom Docks Incorporated, $8,000 for new turnboards and an extra $500 if Custom Docks installed the turnboards. A quote in November for turnboards from Great Northern Docks included new and used parts totaling $11,664, followed by another quote on December 27th by Superior Steel Solutions for $18,185.92, also for swim turnback boards. On November 30th, a purchase order was placed for six boats and kayak paddles for a total of $2,902.99. On January 30th, an order was placed for a high-speed inflator for $117, and an order placed on March 18th for a six-foot inflatable slide for $3,973 that included straps and vinyl paint patch. Thirteen life jackets purchased on January 30th for $234.24. On Monday, March 13th, parents and swimmers of the West Milford Devil Rays were notified that the team was not going to be offered as a program at Bubbling Springs this year. My point here is, these purchases, except for the slide, which was being planned as shown by the purchase of the inflator in January, were all purchased before parents were notified of the closure of the swim team. Was it being planned to shut down the swim team in November, when these things were starting to become ordered? Or was there a plan for these things to coexist? March 15th, at the monthly town council meeting, two days after parents were notified of the team shutdown, a few parents were able to come and speak about this, upset at the closure of the team. On March 29th, a new estimate, along with a written letter, came in from Custom Docks with a quote for entirely new docks, the same footprint as the current docks, including turnboards, new starting blocks, ladders, and pipes, for $110,464. Also, on March 29th, an estimate from Dockhand Services was received, showing redecking of all docks with Trex composite for $34,000, and a review stating, "The frame of the dock is in good condition, and they would suggest a repair rather than a totally new dock system." Their estimate for replacement docks matching the current footprint was $125,000. And to replace the docks, but slightly smaller, would be $110,000. Why the new quotes? At the council meeting in March, it sounded like the docks were already scrapped. You had quotes for repairs from the fall. The town spent a bunch of money on new equipment for bubbling, money that could have gone to the repair of the docks, and been also the same as the cost of the new equipment. No matter what, if there was a suspicion that we were not going to be docks to host the swim team this year, parents should have been made aware of this much sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Rich? Thank you.
So, I just want to kick this off, because Rich and I spoke earlier, and it's kind of a little cliche sometimes, how things work out. But as we were wrapping our head around the major wildfire, 972 acres, which we believe is going to go down as, in history, is the largest fire in, in North, North Jersey history, we were talking about Matt, Councilman Conlon and I, we're talking about how we were going to address and thank all the people and put together this enormous list of mutual aid, volunteers, agencies, businesses, residents, and how they all came together. And once again, our hometown heroes did it for us. So, as he does this presentation, I want to thank you, and I don't know who from the company put it together for you, or if it was a collective effort, but-
It was a collective effort.
Okay. So, once again, I know we had a couple that were left off, and we saw we were, yeah, not, you know, on purpose or what have you. In any case, thank you for putting the list together. And not only is this thank you coming from your company, all the fire companies and the people who helped us, but also on behalf of the entire governing body.
So, I guess for the record, Rich Poplasky, 17 Leonard Ave, West Milford, past 32 years. So, I wrote up a little something, because we felt that the public deserved a public thank you. Yes, we put it out on social media. We addressed the public, but we felt as, due to the magnitude of the, the incident and the result, that the public deserved a formal thank you as well. So, just a little thing, I want to thank the mayor and council giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and address the public. My name is Rich Poplasky. I've been a resident of West Milford my entire life for 32 years. For those who know my personality, most of the time, usually cracking jokes, not much of the serious type, but tonight is going to be a little different. The purpose of me speaking tonight on behalf of the West Milford Fire Department is to publicly thank the West Milford community for the support and assistance during what I like to call the Battle of Canows Mountain. Every day when most watch the news, an incident in the world occurs, and you say to yourself, "I hope that incident doesn't happen here." For this situation, especially out west, with two of our own out west fighting fires out there on the daily, this situation finally came home. During this incident, you had fire companies from Jefferson Township, Kinnon, Ringwood, Bloomingdale, Butler, Rockaway, Vernon, Wayne, Pompton Lakes, Macquannic, Hardeston, Mount Arlington, Greenwood Lake, New York, Picatinny Arsenal, Mine Hill, Bud Lake, Highland Lakes, Parsippany, Riverdale, Lake Hiawatha, Clifton, Patterson, Passaic, Hawthorne, Mendham Township, Lincoln Park, Little Falls, Totawa, West Patterson, Halden, North Halden, and Wanacue to assist us in some type of capacity. Forest fire units from New Jersey Forest Fire Service, New Jersey Fish and Wildlife Forestry Service, and National Park Service from the Forestry Division worked day and night to contain the fire 24 hours a day. Multiple EMS units and task force from New Jersey responded to provide rehab and medical assistance to members operating on the scene. This rehab task force also included a newly developed rehab and canteen unit from Passaic County called the Passaic County Volunteer Emergency Service Rehab Canteen Unit, which is 100% volunteer as well and relies on donations. They were there every day until, until the end of the incident. West Milford departments such as the Police Department, DPW, the Fire Department, EMS, and OEM worked extremely well together and successfully accomplished the goal of life safety. During the incident, there were no injuries, no structural loss, and no loss to add personal animals, especially the ones located at the Echo Lake Stables, which were also evacuated about 100 horses and farm animals in under an hour, which was impressive. Four days totaling 96 hours, units operated at the scene and surrounding areas, which also included responding to other incidents in town. The end result wound up, the fire size being a 97, 972-acre burn, which has been labeled as the largest in North Jersey since 2010. But the real reason why I'm standing up here, talking to multiple members townwide, the most impressive site came from the residents of West Milford and the surrounding areas. From arriving at Echo Lake Stables with trailers to evacuate horses and other farm animals in such a short amount of time, to the amount of donations received from the public. In 16 years of being in the emergency services in this town, those sites were very emotional and put up at a loss for words. Thank you to those who donated day in and day out. The donations of water, Gatorade, coolers, granola bars, other snacks, and just conversation from civilians while standing on Sherwood Court, just to make sure we were okay and if we needed anything. None of it went unnoticed. We wanted to take a minute to thank the businesses who also donated and took care of the units that were operating at the scene. Jimmy G's North, McAppan Pizza, Mario's Deli, Jersey Mike's, Outback from Butler, BJ's Wholesale Club, Home Depot, Lowe's, Sentinel Systems, Columbia Bank, Jesse's Country Kettle, Motorheads, J Alexander Jewelers, Kerry, Amelia, and Lauren, B Mechanical, TJ's Pizza, Cosmos, Northern New Jersey Girl Scouts, Walk Hill Valley Girl Scouts, the 11U baseball team, Frank's Pizza, West Milford Shoprite, the West Milford Board of Education, Walgreens, Acme and Jefferson, Iconic Performance Cycle, Smoke Shack, The Helm, The Vreeland Store, Chick-fil-A of Wayne, and Noah's Ark Portageons. All these donations were passed out to the responding agencies that worked the incident and kept the units hydrated, energized, and, believe it or not, not cranky or hangry during the incident. At one point, the donation stock at company four was so much that we absolutely could not have parked our trucks inside of our bays. We just can't thank the residents enough, the businesses, and the mayor and council for your support and cooperation during the Canows Mountain incident. The remainder of the donations for the public knowledge were divided up between the six fire companies at the end of the incident, in each, for what each, for in, for what each firehouse needed as stock for their own rehab units. And the remainder of the donations were redonated to the local food pantry, as well as to the Passaic County Volunteer Emergency Service Rehab Canteen Unit, which still continues to provide fire rehab to countywide. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you. Rich, I just want to make you aware that we've also penned a letter from the governing body to go to all of those entities and publicly. So, I appreciate you guys once again putting that extensive list together and keeping track of it during such a tough time. All right. If there's not, sir?
More public comment?
Oh, more public, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I was-
No, no, I was waiting until you finished your sentence.
Okay. Well, you go ahead.
Hi. So, I've been here-
Name an address for the record, please.
Yeah. My name's Matthew Kane.
Thank you.
Matthew Joseph Kane. And I live at 1881 Greenwood Lake Turnpike, Hewitt, New Jersey. I've been too, a resident of West Milford for 30, 32 years. I'm adopted, I'm from Peru, and I've, I've had a great story. And I'm up here because, you know, I've, I've been a part of this, the West Milford swim team since like 2007, when I was like 16, 17 years old. And I'll admit, I, I didn't even know what swimming was. I just was told from a cross-country friend, "Hey, do swimming." More or less, I didn't realize he needed boys that were 15, 18 to compete. More or less, I didn't realize he needed boys that were 15, 18 to compete. And next, and two to three years later, I'm running the team who's never swam competitively. And, you know, the sport of swimming, it's really popular every four years, the Olympics. People know the names of Mark Spitz, Michael Phelps. There's famous swimmers like Annie Laser, Lily King now, and it's such a community and a family, which I'm sure, I was running late because I had some other responsibilities, but you've heard all these tales. I mean, there's kids sitting in these seats that are watching government function for the first time, you know, seeing how adults, how people, humanity interacts and does things. And for this swim team to be gone or, you know, put on away, because I'll be careful with my words, I'm sorry, I'm not the best, but it is, it was a little, it was just very disheartening. I know it wasn't directly at me. I understand fiscal responsibility. I understand that it might be more of a macro issue for in general, you know, at Bubbling Springs. I think that the sport of swimming, for me, that's been a part of it, you know, I went from just not even knowing how to swim to coaching at a club, to coaching at a college, to now bringing back, coming to the high school to support our team that got West Melford Lakeland, who, people hear that word and we're usually rivals, but we were united and we got second place in the county on the girl's side. And the boy's side, you know, it's a building program. And when I think of swimming, it's a home for people that don't do other sports. You know, soccer, team mentality. Swimming has been here for a long time and I think for that reason, just because of the variety of people. Here, we might not have like the club swimmers that swim in other townships that practice maybe 40 hours a week, but we have that kid that does track. We have that kid that does, plays piano and they can't, their parents want them to be an athlete and they put them in swimming because they've drawn every other sport. You know, it's the parents with this sense of community, it's the kids. And I wrote down a couple of things here. You know, the flyer that, Mayor Dale, that you put up, I tried to put, I'm very big on mission statements or what things mean with the team embodies. And the goals of the swim team was to having fun, being a part of a team, and the improvement in swimming. And I think that type of ideas for a team are important in anything. I know that I've seen that the Community Recreation Center has put on more programs than anything else, but this program has had about 50 to 70 kids and with probably, when I was looking through, I could pull this up because, or you could fact check me, when you go on the employee list of the Bubbling Springs, I've had the fortune, I've been honored to coach a lot of those kids that are lifeguards, you know? It's its own ecosystem, which I'm sure has been said. You know, I love, I've worked for the West Melford Recreation since I've been 16 years old and this is, this is not a plea for a job because I'll land on my feet, you know? I have very strong beliefs in myself. But I've been an employee of West Melford and two years ago, I was sent here, I came and I witnessed government, I witnessed government a couple of times and I understand the bickering or the words thrown around as part of the process. But I said years ago, when I've been a proud employee of West Melford, I hear when I'm in the government sector, because I worked for Monville Township, you know? When it comes with West Melford, I always hear the politics, the politics, and whether it's true or untrue, you know? If we're gonna as a government, local government improve, I feel we have to have better communication with it. I was looking, Mayor Dale, when you were having your situation with the Battonellis and there was, and it's a whole different thing, but in that letter that was coined from the township, we said we have to provide accurate information. And I feel like, from what I've seen, and I could be wrong, you can clearly point me out and I'm willing to talk. I tried to meet you after the last meeting, you know, we spoke off camera and we said we, you would meet me with the Recreation Director on that Thursday, and I was there and I spoke with Dan and his, and Liz, but I...
I'd have to stop you for one second.
Yes.
I'd like to get off our consensus for an additional minute.
Keep going. Thank you. Go ahead.
I appreciate it, but you know, being in government, even I've been in so long, I'm not the best at it. And then to have these parents, you know, figuring out how we can get the funding, I looked into the green acres, I've reached out to local recreation things, it's just a lot. And I feel like the accurate information out there hasn't been, you know, hasn't been the best, but we don't have to focus on the past, we can just focus on working together to creating a solution where the kids do have an outlet, that the kids here know that a group of people can come together and can work together. If I'm not mistaken, Dale, I mean, Mayor Dale, I apologize, you were once quoted, you once quoted Helen Keller saying, "Alone, alone we can do so little, together we can do so much." And I really believe in that and I really like...
Sorry. That meant...
No, not a problem. I really think that, I really think that what happened, that fire showed what, as a community that we can do when we put our minds together. And I, beyond just coaching the team, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to give the kids another outlet and think that we should really focus in on the Recreation Center's mission statement that supports having a swim team. So I'd like to thank you guys though. I do know you helped get us through a pandemic, you've helped us get through a lot of things. I know we taxes too, and now I'm taxed, I'm interested in that, but I would really, I would really plead all of you, if we could work together to create a solution so that this team can stand for another 30 years as well, so our kids can have an outlet for anybody, all shapes, sizes, and everything. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hold on a second. Do we need a name and address for the record on the minor? I don't believe so. No, so no name and address for the record. We'll get it off the record, okay? Thank you.
So I'm not that much of a big speaker, so listen, give me, I've been part of the swim team since I was five. It's a big part of my life. And during the pandemic, you know, after virtual school, there's nothing else to do with the day except coming to the lake and swimming and doing swim. Very disheartening how they're taking out swim team because when you're like in a hot day, what are you gonna do? Like, I've been part of swim for a while. I have so much medals, I've been part of that team. I've got to know my coaches way better. It's gotten me to like really know what kind of environment we have. And the competitive swim, it's, they don't, they don't really care if we win or lose. It's about the fun we have and it's about supporting each other in the meets. And as like a member of this town for my whole life recently, I love the swim team and it's very disheartening of how they're doing it. So I hope you can take that into consideration.
I commend you.
I would just like to commend you for having the courage to get up and publicly speak. It was awesome. Thank you. Mom, did you have anything to say?
Yeah, another little one.
Or you let your daughter do it? All right.
She has four.
Great. Okay. Hold on. Guys, I see the hand, I see the hand. Not you. No name and address, please.
Okay. I've been on the swim team for a very long time, same with my sister, and it really hurt us that they were like taking it away. And we really just wish that we could have another year because we basically called it our home because we would look forward every day in the summer to go back to it. And it would just, and we would just like to have that again.
Thank you. So commend you. Great job again. A lot of courage to be able to get up and publicly speak, so. Anyone else?
Seeing none, move to close public.
Need a second? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. Counsel comments to public comments. Who wants to begin? I will only say that I think we have a meeting scheduled. There was a parent that reached out to me. We are, we do have a meeting scheduled on Friday at 4:00, if I've got my information correct. So that, those are my comments back. Anyone else?
Mayor, I'll chime in. First, with all due respect to our large contingent from the swim team, I just want to direct my comments first to the fire department's comments because I think without their efforts and the efforts of all of the other municipalities that came to their aid and support, as well as all of the residents, the businesses, the community groups, we might have a few less homes in West Melford this week after last week. Being up here now for four months, I knew nothing about fire. I learned more about fire in the last week that I hope I never have to use again because I hope we never have another situation like this. But I don't think that, I don't think we can do justice to commend our, everyone involved from the state, from, you know, aid from other towns, but for our local people who were on scene for shifts that probably, you know, made them sacrifice their time at their own jobs and away from their own families and away from their own pillows, you know, to be on site and be so dedicated and passionate and caring and make sure that they went above and beyond, it's just, it's just absolutely commendable.
I just want to say, I was down there and there was over 125 people on that mountain fighting that fire. And that's not easy terrain to walk around in, let alone fight a fire in, when you're dealing with smoke and everybody else. Thank God, nobody was hurt.
Yeah. I mean, I was there on Sherwood Court in the cul-de-sac. A few of us were over at, the rest of the service area on 23 and on Echo Lake Road. The first night, we had no idea where it was, you know, where it was going and what was happening. And it was quite an experience and although my eyes got really big for them, they just picked up and they're like, "All right, let's go, let's go put this thing out." And they did. So I just want to thank, thank them and everybody who contributed to that effort. As the mayor said, we have a meeting scheduled with representative from the swim team parents group, and I thank you all for coming out and taking part in the civic process. I'll refrain further comment, I think, at this time until after that meeting because I think sometimes sitting across the table, I mean, we have effectiveness in different negotiations that we do with other government entities and private entities by just getting a few, you know, logical, clear heads to a table and having an open conversation. Some of you have contacted myself and I'm sure I speak for some of my colleagues too that have received it. I got your email about the petition up here, so before anyone says I didn't respond, I'm just, I normally don't, but I'm telling you on camera that I got your petition, so thank you for sending it and we'll definitely give it a look. It's not just a matter of dollars and cents, and we said that the last time. It's a, it's a whole process that was, is a lot of stakeholders involved and I look forward to continuing the conversation with your representatives at the next meeting and ultimately making, you know, a good decision for the community and for all the stakeholders that are involved. So with that, I'll yield back.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Mayor, yeah, I just want to add something to what Councilman Conlon said. I also don't want to comment very much on it. I think the meeting that they're gonna have is gonna be the most productive way to communicate because it's a nuanced issue and definitely not just about dollars and cents. I think a lot of people have the impression here that we've traded the swim team for inflatables and that's not the case. We're all, we're all committed to having this program up and running again. So we're trying to work together with you. So I just want to add that, you know, that no one here is being dismissed. We all think that you're valuable. One of the parents that spoke earlier, I actually grew up on Gordon Lake with him and we weren't allowed to...
Is that Jamie Devers?
Yes.
I knew you looked familiar because I grew up with a brother, Jamie.
Our lake was closed for environmental reasons, as I spoke about it at the last meeting, you know? But my daughter also goes there and we're looking forward to having her swimming there in the summertime. So, yeah, we all share your values. I guess that's my point.
The only other thing I want to say is, I don't know how the, we were mill, I guess I'll call it what it is, we were mill got started, that swim lessons would not be offered. Swim lessons will absolutely be offered at the lake as they always have with the same instructor. So swim lessons are not going away regardless of the decision after the meeting that we are having on Friday. Either way, the swim lessons will be there. I've answered and I don't generally make it a practice to answer in forums because there's such small snippets of information. I don't want it to be misconstrued, but I did answer that one because I think it is important. I know, you know, it's for every child to learn how to swim, whether it's at Bubbling Springs, private swim lessons, your own efforts or what have you. But I will also say that that is, in my personal opinion, a parental responsibility, not a government responsibility. But we do find value in having it as a part of the camp because it is another layer of protection to ensure children can swim. My biggest fear, I can tell you there was several years back, that there was a very big scare at Bubbling Springs. And when you talk about your stomach going through your throat, that's where I was at. Luckily, it was not anything that turned out to be a big deal, but whenever there's a body of water, it's always concerning for anyone. So thank you for, I would like to say thank you for being respectful this evening. Thank you for sharing your thoughts, your passion for what you believe in, for yourself and your children, and also for the community. And again, you know, we'll discuss it more in a one-on-one, but it doesn't fall on deaf ears. Thank you, Councilwoman Zuccico, for reiterating that it was not a monetary decision and it wasn't just based on, it's solely on a monetary decision. So look forward to having that meeting with the parent representatives on Friday and we will take it from there. All right. If anybody doesn't have anything else, counsel, this is really your time. We will move on to unfinished business. Let me just pause because the cameras do pick up a lot of movement. If you prefer not to stay, and I completely understand, and I think the entire governing body completely understands, that you don't want to stay for the rest of the ordinances. I'm gonna just pause for a minute or two to allow people to exit who would like to exit so that we don't get that noise on the camera if anybody is watching it at home.
Take a cookie.
Welcome to take a cookie.
Cookie, bottle of water.
Cookie, take one.
I think our two speakers should definitely take a cookie.
Remind everybody the mics are still live.
I know, you're quick.
We're just talking.
I'll start seeing the layout.
Kind of lighten the, lighten the heat up.
Take your time. We'll wait. Thank you. All right. As soon as the door shuts, we'll start again so there's not the camera background noise. We are up to unfinished business and final passages of the ordinances. Ordinance number 2023-007, ordinance concerning salaries and compensation of administrative confidential and unaffiliated employees. This ordinance was introduced on March 1st, 2023, and notice that the public hearing was also published in the Herald News on March 7th, 2023. The governing body will open the meeting to the public to speak on this ordinance only. Anybody wishing to speak?
Seeing none, move to close public.
All right. Motion to move it?
Moved.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Eric.
Yes.
Councilwoman Zucco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gitzer.
Yes.
Councilman Conlon.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Stand.
Ordinance number 2023-009, ordinance amending section 152-6, violation penalties, false alarms, tampering with equipment of the revised general ordinance of the township. This ordinance was introduced on March 15th, 2023, and notice that the public hearing was also published in the Herald News on March 21st, 2023. The governing body will open the meeting to this public, to the public to speak on this matter only. Anybody?
Seeing none, move to close public.
Sorry.
Motion to move it?
Move the motion.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? If you're caught up, Dee, I'll take roll call.
Councilwoman Eric.
Yes.
Councilwoman Zucco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
No.
Councilwoman Gitzer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gunn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Marsden.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2023-010, ordinance amending Part II, general legislation as Chapter 214 entitled Massage Parlers and amending Sections 214-3. This ordinance was introduced on March 15th and notice that the public hearing was published in the news on March 21st. The governing body will open the meeting to the public to speak on this ordinance only. Anyone?
Seeing none, move to close public.
Sorry.
Okay. Motion?
Moved.
All right. Any further discussion?
Mayor, just want to point out that I've spoken to a lot of people involved in this line of work in the township.
I was gonna say something after the roll call, but please.
But thankfully, none of them have any like material complaints about it. Really, the biggest thing is that they don't like it being called massage parlors. It kind of has the same connotation as brothel.
I think the article in the, in the local news really sparked some concern and it definitely was not...
Accurate?
Clearly depicted that... Clearly, um, depicted, um, that, uh, you know, spas that are licensed, um, you know, they have professional services and what have you. Uh, there's a big distinction between the two and, uh, uh, that caused some angst, um, for local business owners and that's the last thing that we certainly want to do as a governing body. Um, we don't feel we did it. Uh, I know that some of the owners contacted the newspaper, um, who basically decided not to retract or clarify any, um, any information, uh, that they had put out there. So hopefully, if they pick up the story this time, um, they will do, uh, the clarification as much as they can to ensure that this does not affect our local businesses.
Thankfully, this ordinance has received a level of scrutiny from the people that it affects, unlike most of our.
Me too. I know.
Um, and, and the fact that that's the biggest complaint that I could come up with, um, you know, is, is really a testament. It's a good ordinance.
Was this, was this article written right after the Bud Bus article? That might explain a few things.
Okay. Uh, if everybody's done, everybody good? Roll call? I'll take roll call, please.
Okay. Councilwoman Eric.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chizuka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Goodser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
All right. New business introduction of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance number 2023 dash 013, ordinance repealing chapter 158 flood damage prevention to adopt new chapter 158 flood hazard maps to designate a flood plan administrator and providing for severability, key severability and, uh, and an effective date. A second reading of this public hearing for this ordinance is set for the regular township council meeting, which is scheduled for March, uh, May, sorry, May 17th. I don't want to go backwards. Uh, notice the public hearing shall be published in the Herald News on or about April 25th.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel? Roll call.
Councilwoman Eric.
Is there a second? Did we get a second? I didn't hear it if we did. Did you hear it, Dee? Thank you.
Maryland or Maine.
All right.
Okay. Councilwoman Eric.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chizuka.
We moved this, right? We did.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Goodser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. I would like to move 159 through 173. Motion and a second, and then we can have discussion about.
So move.
A second.
I would.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Ada.
On, uh, 2023 169.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. What would you like to discuss?
Uh, this is a business that hasn't followed our rules from the start. So I'll tell you right now, I'm voting no on this one.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilwoman Eric, if, I, I'm in agreement with you on that. So if we would, if you would amend your motion to pull 169 for a separate vote.
Yep.
From the rest, I'll amend my second.
I'll amend my, my motion.
You'd have consensus that it's, uh, wants everyone, everyone wants it pulled? Or you can just, we can.
We're gonna amend the motion majorly.
Let's, why don't we do this?
So we could do a roll call. Can we do a roll call and a no vote on 169?
Yeah.
I just want every separate vote.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, we can just do, spring that out.
So either way. You want to make a motion.
So either, either way, however procedurally you want to do it, but I want to vote, pre-vote on that separately.
So why don't we move everything except for 169? How about that?
Consensus to do that?
Yes.
All right. Move everything except for 169. We'll take a separate vote on that. Thank you, Councilman Conlin.
I'm just 169.
And, uh, we are, anybody else?
Um, number, number five, uh, I didn't remember five on that list, which is resolution, uh, 2023 dash 162. Is that in follow-up to the presentation that was made by the, um, Friends of the Walsh?
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Well, technically, 163 is the follow-up.
Yes.
The money they requested.
163.
Is the money, yeah.
And 162 is independent.
That's their regular, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? All right. 159 through 173, removing 169. Roll call.
Councilwoman Eric.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chizuka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Goodser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Resolution 2023 dash 169.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Eric.
No.
Councilwoman Chizuka.
No.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
No.
Councilwoman Goodser.
No.
Councilman Conlin.
No. Break the rules now.
Councilman Marsden.
No.
All right. Thank you, counsel. We're up to, uh, consent agenda 2023 dash 174, which includes 175 through 181. Motion and a second, please.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Eric.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chizuka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Goodser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, resolution, uh, approval of expenditures, resolution 2023 dash 182.
Beta.
Motion?
Say it, Maeda.
Second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it, mayor.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Eric.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chizuka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lichtenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Goodser.
Yes.
Councilman Conlin.
Yes.
Councilman Marsden.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We're up to reports. Um, other than, again, over and over and over again, thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts, my heart, everything that was done to protect West Milford, the volunteers, the community, just could not be more grateful to be a leader, uh, in such an awesome town at such a trying time. Uh, Councilwoman Eric?
Okay. Um, I'll start off with the National Day of Prayer, which is by congressional act. It is the first Thursday in May, May 4th, Gordon, Maryland. Uh, the history of the National Day of Prayer was, I mean, it, it actually started during the Revolutionary War and it was declared Thanksgiving as the first National Day of Prayer, believe it or not. But in 1952, Billy Graham held a day of prayer on the national lawn to pray for the nation because of the Korean War. And Harry S Truman declared the National Day of Prayer as July 4th in 1952. President Reagan changed it to the first Thursday of May in 1987. So that's your, your history of it. And it was to bring the nation together. So there's three things that are going on that day and, you know, everybody should really attend all three, but if you can, only just attend one. The first one will be at 12 o'clock at Veterans Park, the second one at 4 o'clock at the West Milford Board of Ed, and the third at 7:00. The big one will be at Macben Middle School Cafeteria. And the second thing I have was the beautification and recycling committee was here before, but they didn't get called. So they went home and they left me as their representative to speak about.
Were they on the list?
Cleanup day.
No, they weren't.
Oh, okay.
But anyhow, that, that's okay. They didn't really want to stand up anyhow.
It's a Saturday, right?
The picnic is this Saturday. The cleanup is going on right now. I was kinda hoping that the fire would have cleaned Echo Lake on both sides, but it did not. So we still have to clean Echo Lake Road because as a committee, we chose to do that entire road. But one of the things they wanted. We had never gotten near the edge of the road. I looked. Uh, one of the things they wanted me to talk about was the how to adopt a, a road, a spot, a sign, or a drain. Now, the clean community, if we can get 10% of our drain, manholes, whatever you want to call them, adopted, we get more money in our grant, in the clean community grant. And what it amounts to is if you have a drain in front of your house or near your house or something, every time it rains, please go look at it. If leaves are on it, just move them off. But while you're there, look down inside of them. If the thing is full, call DPW. They'll come and suck it out. It saves time rather than having the truck go from one to the next, to the next, to the next, maybe never get the one that, that's full. The Adopt a Road, we've been doing that forever. So if you want to adopt a road, we will put your name on a sign. We'll highlight it for you if you want. If you don't want your name in a sign, you want an organization, we'll do that for you too. You can adopt a spot, you know, a corner or whatever, but there's rules. I have the rules right here. And you adopt it for a three-year period and you have to follow the rules. They're really simple. Keep it clean. That's really simple, isn't it? So please come and adopt. We're wearing this year's, Marilyn and I are wearing this year's shirts and, uh, if anyone's been really paying attention, the design is from '08. The school never got around to assigning the kids this year, so two of us were wearing our '08 shirts at our meeting. We decided to go with that pattern. So that's why if you think you've seen it before, you've seen it before. And, uh, Saturday, we have a picnic at Melody, at, at Bubbling Springs. Please come. Please clean the roads. Come, we have a lot of prizes. This year, I started giving out T-shirts to the businesses that are sponsoring some of the prizes and, boy, are they excited for a T-shirt. So we have a lot of prizes to give away, you know, a lot of, a lot of really good stuff there. And just come out and support the community.
And how does a business?
Hold on. It's not a back and forth, I'm sorry. You can ask after the meeting's done. Yeah, I'm not trying to be.
Anybody can adopt a, a spot. We have, we have spots, we have roads, we, you know, so anybody, all you have to do is contact, you know, and they'll give you the forms and you'll be on file. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eric. Councilwoman Chizuka, you're up next.
Thank you, mayor. Um, like you, like everyone else, I gotta thank the fire department and, um, all of the participating agencies who assisted with this historic fire. I, um, you know, I, I went and I, I visited it before it was under containment. Uh, I went down there with Councilman Conlin and that Councilman Marsden's there. Um, you know, I, I was trying to prepare myself for what I might see down there. A thousand acres is just staggering. I can't even really conceptualize that. Um, and Councilman Conlin said to me on the way down there that it's not that bad. Um, I, I couldn't imagine how that could be possible, but going down there, if you've seen it, you know, a lot of the trees are still standing. It looks like it cleaned up a lot of the debris that we've been on Newark that they should have been cleaning up prior to a fire happen. No one injured, no, no property damage, not even the horses. Um, it's just, it's staggering to me that such a, such an enormous catastrophe could go by without the loss of life or property. So just well done to everyone, uh, who's responded to that. I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm, I've always had nothing but praise for our volunteers, but I'm, I'm just really dumbfounded and staggered with the ability to really, um, to, to do as well containing this fire, uh, as was done. So, well done again. Um, mayor, uh, with the Economic Development Commission, we are, um, preparing, uh, the map that we've had planned. Um, we have our quotes, uh, eagerly, uh, we were eagerly awaiting the funding, but now we've also begun a conversation with the county.
I saw the emails. I read them.
Okay. So, so for the public, you know, we're gonna have that. Um, also, uh, the feasibility study, you and I should have a conversation regarding that. It was, it was very useful and that's all going to be incorporated into the map, so that's, um, other than.
And the greenways. And eventually, again.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And so, and because of the greenways, because it's going to be connected to the District Trails, Camp Hope and so on, um, it may be appropriate to have the county involved in that, but we're, uh, we want to have that conversation with the timing in mind. Um, you know, so long as, um, you know, we can have a product, you know, pretty quickly, then we'll move forward with that.
You can find a spot on my calendar. I will be there.
So, uh, that's, that's, that's really been, um, consuming most of my time.
And I appreciate you heading that up. It is a big project.
It is, uh, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of, um, all the work that everyone's done in planning it. Uh, the, the study itself is very detailed, very, uh, specific, and you know how I like specific. Um, so many pages to read, but, uh.
I was supposed to read it and then the fire came.
Don't worry. There's also a lot of pictures, so it's not, that, it's not that dense.
All right. Did I?
But that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lichtenberg?
Just to add on to that, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting last week and the chamber was extremely excited to get involved with it.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilwoman Lichtenberg?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I just wanted to add to the beautification day that if you can't participate on Saturday or you can't go out on Saturday to clean up, you can gladly get shirts and bags from the, uh, recycling department and you can participate and do it the week after all. the recycling department, and you can participate and do it the week after all, so you just let them know when you're going to do it so they pick up the bags. And the recycling number is 973-728-2724. Shortly toward the end of the meeting, I'll be appointing a citizen member to our municipal alliance, and we still have one other opening after this appointment. But I do want to say something regarding our municipal alliance, that there is a new recovery
Center.
Rehab Resource Center in West Milford for West Milford residents and families. They have a 24-hour phone number, and it is 855-434-8060. Again, it's 855-434-8060. A rehab resource center for West Milford Township with 24/7 phone number. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Gitzer?
Thank you, mayor. The rec department is looking for women for adult softball league. It's now open for anyone who may be interested in joining a team or starting a young team. Contact the rec department. The rec department is working on having a large outdoor pickleball tournament Saturday, June 24th. This will be at the Nizenzopon Park Tennis Courts to celebrate the opening of the new courts. Registration will be open soon. Voting safety course registration is open for the May 20th class. There are a few spots left. This safe voting course class provides the knowledge needed to obtain a New Jersey voting safety certificate. The township fireworks will be held at the field behind the high school on Friday, June 30th, with the rain date of Saturday, July 1st. The Bubbling Springs Concert Series at the Rotary Gazetteeau will be on Thursday nights, free to the public, June 29th, the after-party, July 13th, Van Martin, July 20th, OCD Band, the Coots on 27th, and Country Comfort on August 3rd. The Paquonic Feed Pet Supply proudly presents their first annual Spring Fest pet adoption event with food trucks and craft fair. That's, this will be this Saturday from 11:00 to 5:00 o'clock, so after you clean the roads and come to Bubbling Springs for hot dogs.
You can go get a puppy.
You go here and get a puppy.
Yeah.
The address is
Park kid.
Marshall Hill Road.
Sounds like a full name.
Obviously, West Milford. Some of the vendors are pampered chef dad's thing. It looks like Avon, so it should be a nice time. This Saturday, we have the beautification day. The Elks will be there serving hot dogs, warm up for the chow derby. What was the 29th? He's, I'm supposed to do hot dogs that day. I'm not sure I'm doing. But the 6th will be the chow derby. And lastly, we all have busy lives. Last week was not a good week. I got food poisoning or something. I was down. I went Wednesday with Councilman Conlin, missed a day of work. I don't get paid if I don't work. So I just wanted to thank him for being there on Friday for the press briefing. Nobody else could be there, and it was, you know, we're a good team up here. He's a good addition to our team. We all work together. We might not all get along all the time, but we all try to do the right thing, and I just wanted to say Matt stepped up this week.
Hot dogs work wonders.
You can have a hot dog on me. That's my report.
Yeah. You assisted me in ways many will never know. This was crazy. Thank you.
Yes, my pleasure.
Councilman, it was really, we did a good job. We got it done. Councilman Conlin, you're next.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you to council, Councilman Gitzer, and to the rest of the council for the kind words, but I was really just staying out of the way, gathering information, and then disseminating it among our governing body, and then ultimately sharing it with the public. And parlaying off of that, I know I was gushing about the fire department before, but I would also be remiss if I did not thank our police department, who was all hands on deck with changing road
Okay. Wait a second. Stop right there. When I say first responder, they are first responders.
I understand. I understand.
Oh, okay. I mean all of them.
Mayor, choose your words wisely.
If I may, if I may finish my, my, my own correction
I was like, wait, wait, wait.
Of my earlier omission.
But never leave them out.
I said before to our fire department, who is amazing, but I am not going to take anything away from the, over the, over, above, beyond the call of duty efforts of our police with fires moving, roads closing, constantly changing, people in chaos, not knowing where to go, motorists are from here, not from here, trying to just make sure that everything was kept under control, and then also handling all the additional calls that were coming in unrelated to the fire because, you know, the township still runs, even though, you know, we had a thousand acres on of scorched earth.